I'd like to welcome everyone to our first council meeting of the decade. It's Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, calling this meeting to order. First, are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, adoption of the previous council move by councillor Frack, second by councillor Dunstall, resolved that the council meeting minutes of December 16th, 2019 be approved. All in favor? Up next, we have our first delegation, the Grimsby Historical Society, Fran Chesney, and Save Main Street organization, Ron Schroeder. Welcome.
Mayor Jordan, members of council, staff, fellow residents of Grimsby. My name is Ron Schroeder. I'm very privileged to be the spokesperson for the more than 200 members of the Save Main Street community organization. I'm also privileged here tonight to share the lectern with Ms. Fran Chesney, the president of the Grimsby Historical Society. We are the oldest town in Ontario. Incorporated in 1790, Grimsby will celebrate its 230th anniversary this year. McLean's magazine ranked Grimsby as Canada's best small town in which to live. That's national recognition of Grimsby's unique character and small-town feel as being the largest benefits of our community. These are strong identifiers that most residents recognize and wish preserved.
Our entire Main Street is a living reflection of Canada's small town. Our Main Street has the largest number of pre-1812 residences in Ontario. They have established and defined the character of the town since its beginning. All our Main Street includes or is part of multiple cultural heritage landscapes identified in our planning department's study titled "Grimsby's Special Places." These cultural heritage landscapes show the historical value and importance of Grimsby's Main Street. However, they need adequate protection in order to preserve that unique character. Today, Grimsby's Main Street is at a critical turning point. The rapid rate of development is placing pressure on all our cultural and heritage resources. Larger properties, both private and commercial, will continue to be aggressively targeted for inappropriate redevelopment, infill, or intensification. Despite our significant heritage sites and landscapes, prior councils have failed to use available provincial tools to protect these resources. These tools also help manage and guide future change, enabling you to achieve your responsible development mandate. So far, the town's conservation efforts have been put into individual designations. These have been too slow, resulting in a patchwork of designated properties and providing minimal protection for inappropriate development throughout the town.
For example, Main Street East alone holds many structures identified as being between 70 and 175 years old. Together with a multitude of cultural landscape elements, they form the unique Main Street East character that we need to protect. The present path continues to erode Main Street's heritage and cultural landscape resources and encourages precedents to rule over character preservation in future planning decisions. Many communities in Ontario have been successful in preserving their heritage. The creation of heritage conservation districts has been key to their ongoing success. The number of Ontario conservation districts has grown steadily, mainly by the desire of most municipalities to protect their heritage resources from inappropriate redevelopment demands. Since 1975, towns and cities across Ontario designated 134 heritage conservation districts. As a result, over 23,000 properties are protected under Ontario Heritage Act Part 5.
Yep, ma'am. It went.
Oops. Yeah. Damn. Pardon me.
Go that way. There.
There we are. For example, Coburg, which is roughly the size of Grimsby, has four large heritage districts and almost 600 protected properties. There are many heritage-minded communities such as those currently illustrated on screen. A heritage conservation district provides adequate planning protection without having to designate each and every property. Overall, a strong district plan supports preservation by discouraging incompatible development while properly managing and addressing the change that is inevitable as our community grows and evolves over time. Grimsby is the oldest in the province, but clearly it is among the furthest behind in its efforts to protect its historic, built, and cultural landscape. The time has come to change that.
You have recently identified heritage preservation as one of your seven strategic priorities. Main Street's heritage value has been outlined in our planning documents, "Grimsby's Special Places." Heritage protection of Main Street is also identified in the official plan, Section 8.15B. But as nothing has been done, we continue to fall behind as outside development forces target Niagara. Without your urgent commitment to adopt and implement actual heritage protection policies on Main Street, our community will be in a situation where there is not much left to To stop the irreversible erosion of Main Street's unique character, we are asking the town to move forward with what planning staff has discussed previously and establish heritage conservation districts along Main Street. The benefits of a heritage conservation district are both short and long term. It offers immediate heritage protection where needed most, as early as the study phase, through an internal control bylaw. It is feasible financially, as the work can be split into smaller heritage studies. It provides efficient planning tools to achieve responsible development and heritage goals set by this council. All the resulting work can be used towards the future heritage master plan.
Such studies necessary to develop a heritage district along Main Street could be managed through a three-year plan, addressing the areas most at risk for redevelopment first. In 2020, Main Street East; in 2021, Main Street West; and in 2022, Main Street Downtown. Delaying will lead to more attempts at inappropriate infill, intensification, and urban design that are incompatible with existing heritage and natural features of our Main Street. What is the matter with this? Technical difficulties, my...
Oh.
Okay. Unfortunately, technology has eluded me again. In closing, we respectfully ask that sufficient funds in the 2020 budget be allocated to undertake the necessary studies for the creation of a Main Street East Heritage Conservation District, that the terms of reference be expedited in the next couple of months, and that the study be outsourced to a specialized heritage company or public heritage consultant. You have continually heard our communities' growing concern about heritage and character loss. Heritage is a strategic priority. It's time to show that our town owns that. There is immediate pressure on our heritage resources of Main Street East. We need your concerted commitment not to defer, delay, or compromise any further on this important matter, and move this forward in a way that reflects a concern for what is left of the unique cultural and heritage landscape around us.
We have a great community. The residents love our heritage and small-town character. Please reach out to them. Together, we can work with you to help supplement human resources, help staff with research for necessary studies to be completed, and together, we can make this happen and preserve our unique character of this town.
We're available for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Fran and Ron, for your presentation. And council, any questions? Councillor Sharp?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I've seen it before at our planning committee, and good both times. But, so I'm prepped, I have a question, if there's anyone from planning, or maybe for Stephen. There was, there was some, some money in the planning budget for a secondary plan that we were gonna change. Does anyone, can anyone give me more information about that? Maybe the Chair of Planning?
Councillor Bothwell?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Jordan. So, at the most recent or previous planning meeting, the budget was briefly discussed as to what the priorities were, and a Grimsby Secondary School secondary plan area was proposed as well to be put into the budget discussions for this year. Mr. Basic mentioned at that meeting that there's potential that that can be delayed. So his position was as well that because of the timing with the school board and the potential development opportunities for that, that there's a potential to move that a year or two down the road. So discussions at our planning meeting were that perhaps we could put a priority and replace it with this one. So I mentioned at that meeting as well, I think, as being a member of the Heritage Committee, that when planning staff approach, we, we put it in our work plan that we were going to move forward on the cultural heritage landscapes. We were given an option of initially five to prioritize, and then we were given an option to prioritize down to three, and then planning staff told us we had to go down to one. So the three that were originally on the table were Main Street East, the Irish Grove Woodlot, and the Grimsby Beach area. And the pressures with the Grimsby Beach area immediately came to surface, but the, the will of the committee was we wanted to do more than just one. So we understood as well the pressures of Main Street East. So we're hoping that that was a position of heritage, too, that we could look at doing more than one and moving this forward. And I'm hoping that, again, that this presentation, which was excellent, that's how it came about at planning, and it was discussed, and it came out as filling that, that, that gap.
Councillor Sharp?
Just wanted to follow up. Do you remember how much that money was for the GSS secondary? And that's it?
I think it might have been 50K, 40 to 50K. That's usually around the normal amount for those studies. So I think that was it.
Thank you, Councillor Bothwell. Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and thank you for the presentation. It's always great to see, to relive, and to see the photos of our, the heritage houses along, along Main Street. It really, it makes, I know it makes us all very proud, councillors and also residents of Grimsby. Just two questions, if I may, Mr. Mayor. In your presentation, and I was following you all the way through it, districts, districts, I just have, what about, my concern is, what about Grimsby Beach? Good Grimsby Beach, I know I'm not a little bit outside of what's your presentation, but it just came to mind, Grimsby Beach. Then I have another question, too, if I may. How we can, you know, is this a doable incorporating of a heritage conservation district, too? So just, just your thoughts on that.
Are we on here? Yeah, okay. Obviously, we have a concern for all heritage within Grimsby. Grimsby Beach, we understand, is already underway. It is the first priority, apparently. We're asking that consideration be given to Main Street East as also a very urgent priority, given all the pressures of development that we're seeing on our end of town.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan. And I guess this question will be for staff, maybe our, maybe our CAO, and if we have any planning staff here that can help, and our Chair of Staff, sorry, our Chair of Planning, sorry, Councillor Bothwell. Yeah, it may not be a popular question, but it just came to mind, and I'm gonna ask it anyways. Is there, is there anything in place where we could have a, do a building moratorium in some of the heritage district areas until, only until, I'm not against, you know, building, but until we can get something like this in place at all? And that's, yeah. And I'll address it to the Chair, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cadwell, and through you, Mayor Jordan. That certainly is, my intention as Chair of Planning is to look at an interim control bylaw when these either, when the, when the consultant is engaged to undergo the study. As I believe you're aware, we need to be actively in the process of undergoing a study of some kind in order, similar to the cannabis reviews that we've done in other communities have put in interim control bylaws while they're undertaking a study of that. We can undertake, we can do an interim control bylaw while we're undertaking that study, but we have to be in a position where we need the budget, then we have to develop the terms of reference, then we have to put out an RFP and, and pretty well commit to the consultant, and then at that point, we would put in place interim control bylaws, because it can only be one year, and we want to make the best, we want to have the most amount of time available for the consultant to, to do that. So the timing would be at the point when a consultant would be, would be put in place and actively engaged. It can be extended from that one year as well. As you know, I think it's further six months, but, or for the year appealable, of course, through LPA, et cetera. But we certainly are looking at the Grimsby Beach, considering the pressures of development right now and the terms of reference we're being drafted. It's been put on hold until we can confirm that our budget money is available for that study, but I'm understanding we should be moving quickly on that terms of reference, and I'm understanding will, the first interim control bylaw we're hopefully putting in place will be Grimsby Beach, and then Main Street East, provided we can get the funding through the budget for that as well, and it's supported by council. We would also look at, at that study area as having an interim control bylaw. Interim control bylaws can be customized. It's not a no-development all. If somebody wants to put a porch on their property, or extend a little bit here or there, there's the flexibility to do that. So it doesn't mean nothing can be done. We would just define how that would look, and we don't, because the community is always often concerned about if we put an interim control bylaw, does that mean I can't do anything? And we don't want to restrict a typical homeowner from doing something that they would normally do as an improvement. So it is a great tool, and we are certainly looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bothwell. Any further questions? Seeing none, Fran and Ron, thank you very much for your presentation, and heritage is deeply important to all of council. Thank you. Up next, we have, oh, all right. Moved by councillor Frack, second by councillor Dunstall, resolved that the delegation from Grimsby Historical Society, Fran Chesney, and Save Main Street organization, Ron Schroeder, with reference to a commitment of resources for the fifth strategic priority be received. All in favor? Up next, we have our second delegation, Executive Director Elizabeth Zimmerman, YWCA Niagara Region, coldest night of the year. That's coming up February 22nd, I believe. Welcome.
Council members for giving me a chance to come in and talk about this, about this upcoming event. We, Grimsby Council has been a great supporter of it in the past. As the mayor has said, it's coming up on February the 22nd. I do have some brochures I can leave with you, hoping that you'll post them, and we are certainly looking for your participation in, in supporting this event. And as I've said, you have always been a great support. We're hoping that you will, as you've done in the past, too, put a team in and help to raise some necessary funds to support our transitional housing program that we operate in Grimsby and through West Niagara. This is a program that supports women and their families that are either on the verge of homelessness or precariously housed, and supports them over a two- to three-year period with helping them to deal with the issues that have led to their current circumstance. And we've had many, many successes in terms of giving them the supports that they need to be able to move on successfully. One of the great advantages of this program is that it allows women to stay in their community and to be able to continue to access the supports, particularly if they have children. You know, we want to be able to keep kids in the schools that they're familiar with. We want to be able to ensure that the family and friend supports that they may have continue to be there. This program, we've been operating at first with the, under the Grimsby Affordable Housing. That has transitioned, and now the YWCA continues to provide those supports in the area. We have about 20 units in the, and in the last, at any given time, we are, we are supporting, you know, 60 to 70 women, men, and children to be able to stay housed, stay in their communities, and have the supports they need to be able to move forward. As I've said, you've been a tremendous support to this in the past, and we are looking forward to having you participate again. This year, we are holding it at Mountain View Christian Reform Church over by Bartlett and King Street, and we're excited about having it at this beautiful location and be able to walk through some of the neighborhoods that are in around that area. It is a, it is a walk, it is a pledge-based event, and as I said, we're really excited about holding it again, and the funds, as I said, will remain in the community to support this program. I'd like to leave this with you and give you the chance, oh, and the one thing that I also wanted to say is we're having, again, our chili cook-offs. We're looking for people to participate, so it just adds another dimension. It's, it's very much a family-friendly event. We have lots of kids that help participate in, in the walk, and we look forward to, again, look forward to having you there. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Great, Elizabeth. Thank you very much for your presentation. Councillor Bain, you have a question?
Just a quick question. How many people do you have to make the chili for?
I'm sorry, say that one more, please.
How many people do you make the chili for?
Well, you know what? We usually have more than enough. So, and we usually have, I think, the last year, we had, I think, close to 10, 10 different vendors that were part of the, part of the competition, and so there's usually more than enough, and it's great, because you get to taste all kinds of different things. So I would say, in the last few years, we've had about 100-plus participants, I haven't got my, I have got my glasses, but I haven't put them on to see all the stats, but, so more than enough for that. And we'll certainly, depending on how many participants, will advise the, the participants in the chili cook-off on how many people will be there.
Is there a trophy for first prize?
Yes, there is. (laughing).
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you for the presentation and the awareness to your, your cause. I've participated a few times, and sometimes Mother Nature can be very hard on us, and then sometimes she can very, be very gentle at times, and there's been some, quite a variation in, in temperatures with having your event. I look forward to, hope, Mayor Jordan sending a challenge out to the two neighboring West Niagara municipalities that we can take them on and hopefully raise, raise some more, some good funds for your event. And, yeah, look forward to the event, and again, it's a great event, it really is. It's a family event, which makes it so much fun. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cadwell. Councillor Sharp?
Just one quick question through the mayor. Is this a chili cooking contest or a chili eating contest?
I think it's both.
Boom. Well, you could count me in.
All right, seeing no further questions, thank you very much again, Elizabeth, and I will read the resolution. Have a good evening, and we'll see you on the 22nd. We hope to have all of council there.
And also, it's okay, perfect to hand out. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Moved by councillor Dunstall, second by councillor Frack, resolved that the delegation of Elizabeth Zimmerman, Director of the YWCA Niagara Region, with reference to the coldest night of the year be received. All in favor? And that's carried. And up next, we have councillor Furtick with a regional report.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor Jordan, and good evening, councilors. I'm going to try and be brief here because by the looks of your agenda, you've got lots on it, so I don't want to get into any serious conversations about. The region is going to be conducting a regional official plan, which they've started. It's going to take about one year, so there is delegates that are coming to each of the municipalities and discussing the official plan with planning. At our last planning meeting, there was a suggestion of economical development study for the entire region, and how it's all washed out, actually, is the mayor, Mayor Senzick from St. Catherine, suggested that they start the project for economical development, and they're going to be, going to each and every municipality and discussing their economical development needs, and then formulating a master plan for the entire region. So here's an opportunity for Grimsby not to hire an economical development officer, because they're not cheap. But having said that, here's an opportunity for the municipalities to contribute to the, the entire regional plan. So it looks like it's going to take on quite, quite an extensive study. Some of the issues that have happened is there's, there's a new water storage system that's going to be installed in Grimsby because of the development in Grimsby and, and the surrounding area. In the last week, the NPCA has elected a Councilor Brenda Johnson from Hamilton, and our own Mr. Bruce McKenzie is the Vice Chair. So we congratulate both of them for that particular job, but, but many thanks to Mayor Dave Bilsma and Diana Hewson for their many, many decisions to put the NBCA, NPCA, we hope, back in its straight. There's been a lot of issues that have been raised over the last while, so thank, thank them very much for their cooperation. Just one note to make is January the 27th, there's going to be an economical, sorry, an EA on the Livingston Avenue extension. I ask you, please, to attend that, that, it's at the Casablanca Inn, and it's a CIP where you can have a look at all the diagrams and everything. There seems to be some sort of indication on a few of the documents that I found that it, the region is suggesting that, that it's going to go through. Well, I have challenged it, and I want each and every one of you councilors to make sure that you go there and you tell them, we don't want the environment, we don't want the extension. So I'm hoping that I have your support and that you show up for that environmental assessment. Other than that, Mayor Jordan, I don't have anything else. Things are going fabulous. Our budget's done, and we're on our way to better days.
Great. Thanks a lot, Regional Councilor Furtick. Any questions? Councilor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Councilor Furtick. My eyes kind of popped up when you mentioned the new water storage for Grimsby, and we have our Director of Public Works in presence right behind you tonight. So can you, is there any elaboration you can bring forward to that, counselor? Is it, I'm, because we do have an old reservoir up on Park Road, and, yeah, anything that you can elaborate to, I appreciate. Thank you.
Through the mayor to Councilor Cadwell, I don't really know precisely the details of it. I'm sure that the Director of Public Works can give you a better, tell you how big it is and all that sort of stuff. I don't know. All I've done is seen it in the budget, and, and it's been approved, so move forward.
Councilor Bothwell?
Thank you very much, Regional Councilor Furtich, for your update. I'm just going to clarify a bit on that Livingston EA for the public who wish to attend, and yes, again, we strongly, strongly encourage everyone to come out. It is January 27th at the Casablanca Hotel. Registration is at 6:15 to 6:30. There's a panel overview discussion from 6:30 to 7:00, and they've noted open house from 7:00 to 9:00. So I believe, I posted this on my Facebook page. We'll see if we can get the town to also post it so that it's up front and center, right on the town's marquee, so that people have that information readily available. We look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bothwell. Councilor Vane?
Good evening, Councilor Furtick. It's nice to see you again, my friend. Two quick questions. Sorry, what was the date of the EA again? I'm sorry, I missed that.
January 27th, Casablanca.
Thank you. One other thing, too, I just, and you know I have a heck of a lot of respect for you, and I appreciate the things you've done for this town and our community as a whole, but I am going to respectfully disagree on one comment you made about the economic development. I know other small towns within the Niagara Region have economic development officers, and I was just reading an article that Councilor Cadwell got out of the newspaper, and it talks about economic officers working together across the region, which I'm all for. Unfortunately, I think Grimsby has been very badly neglected over the past years as far as industry, and as we're doing our budget this year, you know, we're going to probably get somebody come in and say that, you know, keep the taxes low, and yet everybody wants services. So as we know, industry pays more taxes than they use, and we need them badly. I'm going to still hope that we're going to push forward for an economic development officer with the intent that we're going to work with the other areas within the region, but I still think Grimsby needs its own. Just my opinion. I respect, I appreciate very much everything you've done for us. I'm just going to respectfully disagree on that one point.
Through to the Chair, to Councilor Vane. What's your question?
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. I thought maybe you were going to challenge me to possibly hire an economical development officer. Anyway, you know what? That's, that's been the past councils that have agreed not to hire an economical development officer, and if, if that's the wishes of this council, then go for it.
Seeing no further questions, thank you very much, Councilor Furtick. Up next, we have Report HR 0201 Employee Code of Conduct. Good evening, Ms. Caterina Bahar. Sorry.
Maybe while we sort that out, first, I'm pleased to introduce the latest addition to our HR team, Jillian Mastandrias. So she's, she's our new HR assistant. Was it three and a half months, almost four, with the team, and we're very pleased to have her.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, so, so we're pleased to, to present to you today the, this employee code of conduct for the Town of Grimsby. As some of you may know, the Town of Grimsby does not currently have a code of conduct for staff, so this was a great opportunity to incorporate what is our whistleblower policy into one comprehensive code of conduct, and whistleblower policy that addresses and articulates the values of the corporation and wishes to foster in its employees and its leaders a code of conduct, and in doing so, defines desired behaviors based on the principles of integrity, accountability, openness in conducting administrative and operational activities, and strives to maintain the highest level of public confidence in all that we do. So why a code of conduct and, and a whistleblower policy? This acts as a central guide and reference for employees to support their day-to-day decision-making. It empowers employees to handle ethical dilemmas that they encounter in, in their everyday work, encourages discussions of ethics and compliance. It enhances the corporation's core values, beliefs, and sets the right culture. It also fosters an environment of trust and ethical behavior, demonstrates the corporation's commitment to high standards of right conduct, and helps to mitigate financial risks associated with ethical misconduct by demonstrating a good faith effort to prevent serious wrongdoing. So Jillian's going to give an overview of the code of, the code of conduct and the different elements that are covered in the Town of Grimsby policy. Okay, so employee responsibilities is a section of the code. Employees have responsibility to familiarize themselves with all sections of the code, and employees are expected to adhere to the core principles of business integrity outlined in the code, which includes upholding the law, treating all persons with honest, honestly and fairly, being professional, respectful, and courteous, being accountable and responsible for their decisions and actions, promoting a healthy work environment, and carrying out their duties in a fair, impartial, and transparent matter, and finally, reporting on noncompliance of the code. Another section is respecting the law. All employees need to be familiar and abide by all laws and regulations applicable to the town in the areas in which they operate. And our section is protecting confidential information. Confidential information must be protected in accordance with the code and applicable town policies. Employees must use information obtained through their employment with the town only for the purpose of performing the responsibilities of their position. And then integrity and public confidence. Integrity and public confidence is put at risk when the conduct of an employee involves or appears to involve a conflict between public duty and private interests. The code defines areas where public, where conflict of interest may arise, including concurrent employment, business and personal relationships, gifts and hospitality, political activity, social media and communication, fraud, theft and vandalism, and bribery and corruption. And work environment. Every employee should make every effort to support and maintain a safe and healthy work environment that is accessible, inclusive, and respectful. To promote a positive work environment, the code addresses a few areas, including creating a respectful and inclusive workplace, appearance and courtesy, health and safety, impairment at work, and retaliation or reprisal against employees. So furthermore, on retaliation or reprisal, the town prohibits retaliation or reprisal against an employee who reports an act of serious wrongdoing or participates in an investigation. Any employee who attempts to intimidate or retaliate against anyone who makes such a report will face disciplinary, disciplinary action up to and including termination So I'll talk a bit about noncompliance reporting, or what we will call the whistleblower process. So employees must report any, any serious wrongdoings, including practices, behaviors, activities, or actions that are believed to be in contravention or in conflict with the code of conduct or other town policies. Employees who become aware or have directly experienced an action which is in contravention of that code would be asked to keep a written record of incidents, dates, times, locations, possible witnesses, and attempted resolutions and behaviors of the employees involved. They would report those details of breach to either the Office of Human Resources or to the CAO as soon as possible. HR or the CAO would then initiate an internal or external investigation, depending on what's more appropriate in the circumstances, within five business days of the receipt if it's, if it's deemed to be a qualifying complaint. A qualifying complaint means that it's covered in the code of conduct and, and therefore should be investigated. Jillian? And lastly, all employees will be required to review and acknowledge that they will comply with the code on an annual basis. All employee acknowledgements, all acknowledgements will be recorded, and a copy will be kept in their personnel file. The code will be reviewed and updated annually or modified by, from time to time to keep it current and reflective of emerging laws, regulations, policies, and best practices. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Kat and Jillian, for your presentation. Jillian, welcome to our team. Councilor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jillian, very welcome. Good to see, good to see you out here. One question around whistleblowing. I note that the ultimate complaint goes to the CAO or Human Resources. Is that correct? It's internal? So all complaints go, is, are, come to an internal office or internal person?
Yes, complaints, complaints. We recognize that complaints would often be received by the direct supervisor or the manager of the person who, who wishes to make a complaint for noncompliance. So in those instances, the supervisor could also receive the complaint, but then would, would inform the employee of the policy and the, the process for submitting a complaint through either HR or the CAO.
Second question. So usually, doesn't whistleblowing calls go to an outside agency? I mean, rather than, what if the very people that are receiving these calls are the people that the whistleblower is all about?
If the, if the complaint for noncompliance is about the CAO or about the Office of Human Resources, it would go to council.
But how does, does it, how does it get there? I mean, does, how does, how does that call or that complaint get directed to council? I mean, is, when you, I guess it's a call line, is it? Is it a call line, or is it, is it written, or how does it work?
It's, currently, so we, we have a form provided. The form provides the information that would be required in the initial stage of receiving the complaint, but it could be provided in any way. So if, if an employee feels, or a whistleblower feels like providing some other type of written submission, like a letter or an email, it's still valid and it can still be received, but the form provides all the information that would be needed to receive the, to receive the, the document. It would be, if it's about HR or the CAO, it would then be provided to the mayor, and the mayor would, would review and, and deal with the complaint with council.
And would not be, would it not be anonymous? I mean, can you not be anonymous when you do whistleblowers?
It can be anonymous. It, it can be anonymous, however, it can be, sometimes it can be difficult to investigate anonymous complaints, but it certainly can be anonymous, and employees could do this, or whistleblowers, other whistleblowers could do this one of two ways. They could either fill out the form but not put their name, or, or they could submit the form through a lawyer, a legal representative.
Thank you, Kat.
Councilor Furtick, then Councilor Bothwell?
Just a suggestion, and perhaps you've, you've already thought of this, but I think it would be a good idea to make sure that every employee has read and signed a confirmation that they've read the code of, code of conduct. In the, in a similar way, in the federal government, we all sign a conflict of interest, and, and that becomes part of your file.
Thank you. Councilor Bothwell?
Thank you for the work put into that. Initially, when I brought forward the motion for the whistleblower policy, I was hopeful to see that it would be a separate document. I just am worried that bearing it within the code of conduct might not be the best place for it. So we can maybe review that later. I don't know if we want to review it now, but I just, I had asked if there's a way that we can make it as a separate document. The only other thing on that is, again, as Councilor Frake mentioned, the reporting and the investigation portion, I would like to see within that whistleblower document that should council be the one to have to do an investigation, that we have the resources available to go to a third party to contract or to have us, to assist us in that. And I didn't see anywhere in there where we had that opportunity for council to, to include a third party in any cir, in any situation, or in fact, where HR may feel uncomfortable with addressing a particular type of complaint, that we should have access to a third-party resource. So I'd like to see that incorporated into the document, if that can be noted. I did notice one other section, sorry, quickly, within the code of conduct, and I just briefly went over it. There was a paragraph regarding employees informing their manager or the Office of HR as soon as possible when they're charged with a criminal offense or other similar practices prohibited under law for which they've not received a pardon. And when a manager is so informed, they must And when a manager is so informed, they must inform HR, and there may be employment consequences if an employee is charged or found guilty of an offense or pleads guilty. Just because often in government, again, I'm just referring to my own type of employment, the type of offense or criminal offense may or may not be relevant to the type of employment for which the employee is currently in, in which case it isn't relevant to whether or not they retain their job. And I think that it doesn't clarify there that depending... It doesn't really say, like, you're asking them that they must declare all criminal offenses, and if it's not related to their employment, I just think there shouldn't be an onus on them to say if it isn't directly... Like a driving, a criminal, a driving offense, whatever, but they don't have to have access to a vehicle or drive in their employment with the town. So a conviction for a driving... And I'm just way out there, but like a drunk-driving conviction or something like that may not be particularly relevant to... And hopefully, that's probably a very bad example, but I'm just saying, in most cases, when they write these things, it says, not just for where a pardon hasn't been granted, but where... Something about where it might impact or not be impacted as a relationship to their employment and whatever, you know what I mean? So just considering the language of that may be a little bit better to allow a little bit more leeway for those circumstances. Otherwise, I think it's great. I think it's... I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this document, and I guess it's a living document, so we will be reviewing this on an annual basis as well.
Yes, this would be reviewed on an annual basis and updated, and there is an annual acknowledgement, a sign-off of having read and understood.
Thank you. Counsel Vane?
First of all, Jillian, you did great, okay? I told you I wouldn't make a big deal out of it, okay? All that aside, I want to thank you both for doing this. I just have one question, a clarification to... I'm going to direct this one to Kat, Jillian. Counsel Frank just asked a question about having an employee put in an anonymous complaint. I have a concern with that in that any member of this town hall right now could send in an anonymous complaint. How do we know it's from an employee? So I do have concerns with that in that I agree, I believe, with what Counselor Bothwell said, that... Or maybe it was Counsel Frank or Barty, I'm sorry, I don't remember who, but maybe an outside agency to take the initial complaint if there's a concern about privacy or blowback or something. I'm just thinking out loud, that's all.
So the complaint would be... The complaint can be anonymous. What's important is the content of the complaint and the ability to have enough information in the complaint to be able to investigate, even though we don't know, we may not know who it came from. The obligation to investigate is still the same. Certain aspects of the investigation can become much more difficult with that, but the obligation to investigate is still there. The other difficulty is not knowing who to follow up with at the conclusion of the investigation if the complaint was made anonymously. But as I mentioned earlier, it certainly can be submitted anonymously through an external body like a lawyer on behalf of someone who wishes to file a complaint for noncompliance. So we could receive it from, for example, a representative of the person.
Counsel Vane?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up question, Kat. I'm just thinking of a court system. They have a thing where they... I forget the terminology, but basically people put in constant court cases. You see it a lot in small claims courts. People put in a lot of frivolous cases, like I think anything more than 10 cases a year or something, they consider you a frivolous complainant. My concern is if you don't get satisfaction, if the employee's not happy with the outcome, what's to stop them from keep putting in complaint after complaint after complaint? Just the anonymous thing that kind of concerns me is there's no accountability there. That's all that concerns me.
So frivolous complaints or ones that are not made in good faith are actually also considered a breach of the Code of Conduct and may actually warrant an investigation in and of itself.
Thank you. Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you for the report, ladies. And just a question I have, reading through it, it kept saying employees, employees. Is that full-time, part-time? How does that... Can you just clarify that? Is that all employees of the town, or... Just looking for that type of clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Jordan. So it will be encompassing everyone, so some are students, full-time, part-time.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Kat and Jillian. When you made the presentation, you said that before this, we didn't have a Code of Conduct, but we are governed by laws of Ontario, and there's the Bill 168, which is harassment in the workplace, which the Code of Conduct covers very well and expands on that too. So before this is put into place, we have been using that tool, have we? Can you tell me if people have been properly trained with Bill 168 and how it has impacted our workplace over the last, what is it, 10 or 12 years we've had the Bill 168? Then it was 2008? Oh, yeah. Uh-oh. So it's a good one to question.
Yes, we've had workplace violence and harassment policies in place for quite a long time. There is training as part of new hire orientation. That's part of an introduction of an employee into the corporation, and where needed, we address and remind staff of those policies and procedures as the need should arise.
Can I just... Yeah, I just wanted to have that clarified, because when you made the presentation, for the general public, they might not think we had any kind of Code of Conduct prior before this. And I'm, oh, you know, it's... We've been following certain laws that have already been in place for many, many years. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you, Jillian and Kat, for your presentation. Excellent job. I'll read the resolution now. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, seconded by Counsel Frank. Resolved that the Office of Human Resources recommend to Town Council that council receive Report HR 20-01, Employee Code of Conduct, and that the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? Up next, we have Report HR 2002, Council Compensation.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So what I... In response to a resolution of Council of November 4, 2019, Council has directed staff to review and provide a report regarding council remuneration. A review of compensation for council has not been completed in a very long time. In fact, I wasn't able to locate the record of the last time through the Treasury, but it is a best practice that these types of reviews are done periodically, at least every five years, or often recommended that it's done every term of council. So it's certainly time to review the remuneration or compensation of council. I'm recommending that this is done as a two-part process. The first part is to discuss the methodology, the compensation philosophy, and the council-specific compensation strategy, and agree on that so that we can move forward with producing the information report for council. I'm sharing within the report the Town of Grimsby compensation philosophy, which was approved last year. So the Town of Grimsby's compensation philosophy is to administer pay in a manner that is nondiscriminatory, fair, compliant, competitive with external market comparators, and financially responsible. Fair meaning that internal equity is achieved through job evaluation or abandoning of similar value positions. Compliant with pay equity and other legislation. Competitive meaning it addresses attraction and retention issues by paying at a competitive percentile of the defined comparator market. And financially responsible meaning affordability is determined by council, taking into account budget implications and projections. This is the compensation philosophy that was used as a guiding principle for the staff compensation review. Targeting the 50th percentile or the median of the comparator market, which is representative, conservative, and reasonable, giving regard to the scope, size, and composition of the comparator group in relation to the Town of Grimsby. Within that, then, is sort of the council-specific strategy with respect to the compensation approach, which talks about the specific roles of councillors and basing the compensation for mayor and councillors on realistic standards so that elected... Maybe compensated according to their roles and responsibilities. To achieve that, a compensation plan should reflect a fair and reasonable compensation that will attract a diverse and representative pool of residents wishing to seek election to council, but also be seen as fair by taxpayers. Recognizes that the work of the mayor and council is demanding and important, as such, they should be appropriately compensated. And recognizes the complexity, responsibilities, time commitments, and accountabilities of... Associated with the role of mayor and council. So therefore, I am recommending a methodology by which we would complete the compensation review, which would be to use the 11 Niagara Regional Municipalities in the region of Niagara. We would group the market, the sample market, in two groups. The primary comparator group, which is comparable municipalities with a population size of 30,000 or less, and a secondary comparator group, which would be a blended result of those municipalities with a population of 30,000 or less, plus the other municipalities within the Niagara region and the region. We would target the median or the 50th percentile of the market, which is the compensation best practice, and we would be looking at compensation levels at or below 10% of the median as being considered within market. We would also be reviewing participation in group benefits, OMRs, and other compensations such as compensation for boards or committees. All of the above recommendations are based on common industry standards and compensation best practices, but recognizing that one of the arts of compensation reviews is the identification of a comparator group, which is one of the more difficult things to define. So in conclusion, maintaining market competitiveness is in line with the town's compensation philosophy and council-specific strategy, and is a key aspect of fair and reasonable compensation. Therefore, it's recommended that it certainly is time to review council remuneration compensation and ask that council approves the compensation strategy, the philosophy, and the methodology described in this report, and we would then prepare the data and present the information report at the next meeting of council.
Thank you very much for your report. Kat, any questions from council? Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I'm just going to give a comment, just so the viewing public has a little bit of understanding how Grimsby's been operating for a lot of years. And I have spoken to my friends in other municipalities, and this is out of due respect only, that chairs and other, the other committees as Grimsby Power, we don't get anything extra for that. I'm not complaining or anything like that, this is how it is. And I know in other municipalities, some of them do, and just using an example is Hydro. We have members that sit on Hydro boards, and we get stipits, which, just for the public, that money gets all collected in reserves, and then as a council, we distribute that back to the community. So, yeah, I just want to, again, for the viewing public, that's all. Thank you.
Counsel Barty?
If I might just add to that, that's the distribution, that's what it was done in past years. Personally, I don't agree with that process. I think the money should come to the town, and it goes into our general reserves, because it just seems like we, in past years, there hasn't really been a fair and equitable way to distribute that money, so I'd rather see it just go into the general reserve. So to say that's how we do it, I think it's fair to say that's how it's been done in the past, but not necessarily. I don't think there's been agreement that that's how we would do it in the future.
Thank you through you, Mayor Jordan. Just a question to Kat. What I'm understanding is you're going to undertake this review immediately and report back at the next meeting, is what I heard. It would be interesting to hear if there are any other municipalities of part of this target sample group that are also thinking of undertaking their own review at the same time, so that as you're going through it and just checking to see if they're also considering reviewing theirs, because that may impact if they're going to be undergoing that at the same time, we'll be out of date even before they finish doing theirs. So just getting an understanding of other municipalities, if they're set where they are, or they are going to be considering reviewing theirs. Might be good information to have. The next point was the timing of the implementation of the results of this review. So the review will come out, we're undergoing our budget process right now. Is there any intent that the results of this come to council with a recommendation potentially for additional... Should there be a resulting increase, potential increase, to council salaries? Is the intent that it come forward in this budget year, or is the intent that it be held in abeyance until the end of our term?
Through the chair, I think that'll be a decision made by council. The report will be presented as an information report, and council will make the decision on any adjustments and the retroactivity.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll read the report. Thank you very much for your report, Kat. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, seconded by Counsel Frank. Resolved that the Office of the Human Resources recommends to Town Council that Report HR 20-02, Council Compensation, be received, and that council review and approve the Town of Grimsby compensation philosophy, council-specific compensation strategy, and methodology to be used for the review. All in favor? And that's carried. Up next, we have Report TC 20-01, Committee of the Whole Governance Structure Change. Clerk's going to... Sarah Kim will be presenting that. Thank you, Sarah.
Ken, to the mayor. I haven't really had an opportunity to really study this. I think a lot of folks around council probably are as well. I want to speak for them, but I, for one, would like to defer this to the next meeting so I get a chance to really delve into it and do deeper. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I'd like to suggest we defer it.
If that's a motion to defer, I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion by Counsel Frank and Counsel Barty to defer Report TC 20-01. All in favor of deferring? It looks like Sarah, you're presenting tonight.
So further to my report regarding the Committee of the Whole Governance Structure Change, I wanted to provide some key highlights through this presentation. So one of the guiding principles in the council's strategic priority setting was the need to streamline decision-making at the council level, improving processes, and enhancing clarity and efficiency to ensure accountability and transparency. So to establish this priority, it is recommended that council implement a committee of the whole governance structure that foster a constructive and a high-performance team through consistency, transparency, and improved productivity. The committee of the whole would comprise of all members of council who fully participate and debate and engage in the decision-making process of council through consistent membership and to exemplify council's commitment to good governance. So I want to go over some of the key facts, the current challenges that we face, the benefits of the new proposed governance structure, and the breakdown. So currently, a challenge that we have is that the entire council does not have the benefit of hearing all of what the Standing Committee... benefit of hearing all of, all of what the standing committee hears, and therefore items are being discussed only with half of council. Members can attend standing committee meetings to which they have not been assigned to, but cannot move or vote on any recommendation, and also, for the most part, they don't participate in the discussion unless it's, uh, they're formally acknowledged by the chair. There is also, uh, quite a bit of duplication stemming from other departments and councils not knowing, which, um, leads to this consistent need to recap business items. Also, another issue we have is because we have the different committees in council, delegations feel the need to attend both to ensure that they have been heard by all members of council. So many feel, so many feel the need to consistently request delegations, and this is clearly a duplication of both the public and council's time. So as you can see here, we spend approximately two hours, or for average meeting length, we spend approximately two hours for both min- administration and finance, and Parks, Recreation, and Culture Meeting, and approximately, approximately two point seven, five hours in planning. Public Works, I actually noticed that didn't, they didn't record the adjournment time, so I cannot get the average meeting length. So I bring this up to show that there are different time commitments, uh, required from members of council, and how a lot of this could be reduced by optimizing time efficiency and streamlining, streamlining our processes. This slide also shows our average number of scheduled meetings. So we have twenty scheduled council meetings and forty-eight scheduled standing committee meetings for a total of sixty-eight. Uh, the average total in the Niagara region is twenty-eight scheduled meetings, and the number is lower in the region, uh, because many of the committee, many of them have Committee of the Wholes, um, therefore reducing their meeting numbers. This also, this number also excludes the statutory planning public meetings, and if you include those, that would be eighty, and if you look at subcommittees or boards, uh, the number is approximately hundred and fifty-three meetings in a year, where some or all members of council must attend. So further challenges that we currently have with standing committees are changing or canceling meetings, uh, reduced accountability as only appointed members of the committee are allowed to vote. Some meetings are still in the side conference room, which also leads to informal discussions, and they are not live-streamed, which is a lack of transparency. We are removing and adding items to the agenda last minute, and this is something that will be improved through a procedural bylaw update as well. Again, there's many repetition and inconsistency of departmental reports and committee structure. So right now, each department is responsible for their own committee, which can lead to this inconsistency. Um, there's also a lack of procedural knowledge, as some committees are clerked by the directors, and on that note, this will be changed in the Committee of the Whole structure, as directors will be there to focus on items, and answer questions, and provide subject matter expertise, while a statutory clerk will clerk all the meetings. Uh, there's also some inconsistencies, as some standing committees currently have lay members. Um, there are three lay members on planning and four lay members on Parks and Rec. Although membership of these lay members on the standing committee level is very unused and not best practice, there's definitely recognition of the benefits that committee members provide. They are invaluable resources, and they, their input provides diverse feedbacks. Therefore, it's recommended to retain them in a subcommittee or working groups as a more technical advisory capacity to council, and keep them engaged in a less formal setting. On this note, staff will also work to review all our subcommittees and address if there's any gaps, such as maybe the need for other subcommittees, such as maybe an age-friendly group. So while looking at the benefits of the Committee of the Whole Governance Structure, we looked at how to reduce duplications while finding ways to streamline the decision-making process, and to achieve greater consistency, transparency, efficiency, and increased performance. With that in mind, um, we found that Committee of the Whole would save and improve council and staff time, and the, um, and also will update our procedural bylaw, which would ensure that we have efficiency to streamline the process, such as introducing consent items. There will also be the same commitment throughout all the members, reduce the total number of meetings to approximately twenty-four scheduled, uh, meetings from sixty-eight, and there'll be, uh, an improvement to achieving quorum, because the two dates per month that we are asking are already scheduled for council meetings right now. Also, we would improve transparency and accessibility with the public, because all Committee of the Whole will be in this council chamber and live-streamed. There will be greater access to the public, and the public can also be aware of all the business items more easily. Also importantly, there'll be almost no change or canceled meetings due to lack of matters for consideration. I mean, currently, I see some departments having possibly one or two items, but because they, they're not pressing, the meeting gets canceled, and those items get added to the next committee, uh, next, uh, committee meeting. With Committee of the Whole, uh, this would not occur, as all service areas will report to Committee of the Whole, and there'll be matters for consideration, and those items, even if it's just one, would be easily added. So this governance structure change would consist of a Committee of the Whole followed by a council meeting. Uh, this would allow for more efficient decision-making and less public confusion, as business will be ratified on the same day. This will also allow staff and public to leave the meeting knowing the outcome of their item of interest without having to wait for their matter to be dealt with. Relevant directors will also be in attendance at Committee of the Whole and provide for the members to ask questions to staff and vote on each business item, as it is brought forward. This would provide more information and clarification before voting, and all members of council will able to, will be able to participate in debate and discussion, and be fully aware of all the, all the issues. I think with these positive changes, it would promote teamwork and alignment across the entire, entire corporation. So just to recap, this table outlines some of the general changes. As you can see, Committee of the Whole would comprise of all members of council, no lay member membership, and all members participating in voting, all service areas reporting to the Committee of the Whole, and the last point is regarding the chair of the Committee of the Whole. This would be something that council would need to vote on tonight. Uh, so we are, um, so for the chair of the Committee of the Whole, I've provided two options, as you can see. The first option, and the option we recommend, is for the mayor to chair for the full duration of the Committee of the Whole. This option, we believe, would provide for more consistency. However, the second option is to have rotational chairs, so current or even new chairs could rotate for their portion of the committee. So that means there would be four, uh, chairs for the Committee of the Whole. However, on a side note, we are recommending that because planning open houses and statutory public meetings are conducted a bit differently from your traditional sense of a meeting, uh, we're recommending to retain our current chair of planning, Councilor Bothwell, for these meetings. So this slide provides the breakdown of our meetings. The Committee of the Whole would occur on the first and third Monday of each month. The Committee of the Whole meeting will commence at seven, and we can maintain the summer hours of six-thirty for July, August, and September. Uh, then there'll be a recess to allow some time for preparation between the transition of the Committee of the Whole and council, and then we'll start council, the council meeting as soon as possible. The agenda for the council will now be significantly smaller, as most items will now be discussed at Committee of the Whole. Council meeting would be to ratify the minutes of the Committee of the Whole, pass the bylaws, and usually the closed sessions. Usually, as we have bigger planning items, it's most likely that this will happen on the third Monday for the Committee of the Whole. We're also putting a placeholder for the second month, uh, second Monday of each month, which is, I'm just naming a provisional committee meeting and our workshop meeting. So this date is in place for most likely those statutory public meetings of significant development that would likely be longer in duration and garner significant public interest that cannot be covered in our normal meeting schedule. It can also be for additional meeting if required to address business items that cannot be completed with, within the two, uh, scheduled Committee of the Whole meetings. Best efforts will be made to schedule the workshop meeting during this time as well, which are for the purpose of receiving education and training. If there's no, uh, no such matter during a given month, this provisional committee meeting will not occur. So this slide is an overview of how our meeting schedule will look like for 2020. We are targeting a commencement date of March 2020, and in this schedule, we've also taken into consideration, uh, when setting the date, uh, the March break, the FCM conference, AMO conference, and obviously the statutory holidays. So finally, to best align with council's strategic priority setting, we are recommending the following governance structure change. So transition to Committee of the Whole comprised of all members of council. Discontinue the four standing committees. Committee of the Whole will be followed by a council meeting on the first and third Monday of each month, commencing at seven PM. Mayor chairing the full duration of the Committee of the Whole. A provisional committee of the Whole meeting scheduled for the second Monday of each month as required, and the approval of the new 2020 meeting calendar targeted to commence March 2020. I mean, this definitely is a big milestone, and there'll be a learning curve, but, uh, it will definitely, definitely be an improvement to our governance structure, and once this is approved, the next step would be an update to our procedural bylaw to ensure further clarity, and we are targeting the end of February for this. So, thank you, and any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, Councilor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, to Sarah. Uh, my comment earlier wasn't to discourage all your hard work, 'cause you put a lot of work into this. It's just because I, I just wanted more time to think this thing through. I feel that we're, we might be having fewer meetings, but it sounds like we're gonna have longer meetings, because we're now going to be covering three to four standing committees in one meeting. So I cannot imagine that being two or three hours. This, these are gonna be very long meetings, and we know even just at our, at our council meetings now, they take a long, long time, so I'm just a bit concerned about that. Can, can you bring up the last slide that you had there, if you don't mind? So we'll discontinue the four standing committees, okay? That, that would include planning and development. Is that what you're saying? Yeah? So they, they will also, so all four of them will be, will be disbanded. Uh, so the lay members, who are, are really experts on some of the subject matter, in planning, for example, and in, uh, Parks and Rec, how do they feed into this particular new concept? I mean, obviously, we wanna have their input before we come to the meeting to make decisions, so is there some process that we've devised for that? So, yeah, I'm a little concerned that we're going to be having longer meetings, and, you know, evening meetings, uh, they're pretty tiring, and mentally and physically, so, anyway, just a few questions for you to address. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just for an example, this month, we had cancellation of public works and Parks and Rec, so we only had two, uh, standing, uh, committee meetings, right? So we are going to work to streamline the process, to have shorter meetings as well. Uh, also for lay members, we are suggesting that they are retained in subcommittees, in subcommittees, and subcommittees will report to the Committee of the Whole. So all their feedbacks will be incorporated and provided through, uh, reports, directors' reports as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Bane?
Thank you, Sarah. An excellent presentation. Um, couple of things. Uh, as far as the, uh, lay members, I appreciate and respect what they do give, uh, especially since four of them are on my committee that I chair currently. Um, but I think one of the biggest issues that I've heard from not only members of council, but from, uh, people in the public, is they make decisions and votes and stuff on, and that's part of the reason why, uh, we don't want to continue, is because they're not accountable, is what other people have said. So, um, I fully support the idea of the committee members, or of the, uh, council of the whole, but I think if anybody, I don't agree with having a separate committee. I don't, or a subcommittee, I don't think it's necessary. If they have things to say, let them come as delegations. I, I just, I just think that's an extra, we're, we're getting away from what we're trying to do here, and, and then we're gonna talk about eliminating chairs of standing committee, but we're still gonna have the chair of the planning committee, when I think that's something that should be rotated to different people, to give different people, different members of council the experience. Um, and, um, as far as the Committee of the Whole, it, it makes more sense to have the mayor lead it all, because it, it'll be quicker, uh, he's far more experienced. Uh, the idea of having chairs of current committees that'll no longer exist, but they're gonna talk about certain areas, it's ridiculous. Let's just have a committee, period. Uh, I agree with what Councilor Frick says. If, if we have, uh, meetings that are planned to be very long, um, then we have the provisional days as well. We can always extend it another day. So I think the idea is, you're, you're halfway to getting it reformed, and I think we need to eliminate all the excess. Just have a committee of the whole. We're all equal. We all do whatever. We don't have committees. We don't have anything. We're just one committee. Just my thought. Thank you.
Councilor Bothwell?
So when I saw this agenda item, I did pose a few questions to, to our clerk, um, because, um, it is a significant change, um, being chair of planning and having probably the longest meetings ever in the history of, yeah, regularly. It's getting better. But, um, uh, I did ask that because often our agendas are quite full, and I don't see how they're gonna fit into making the Committee of the Whole meeting shorter, um, I'd asked whether or not those, whether we can keep planning as a separate, um, uh, night on its own. Um, so I'd still like to see that, because I honestly don't feel it's gonna work, um, in combination with Committee of the Whole. I, I do think the other three standing committees can merge quite nicely into a shortened agenda with a full council following it, but, um, to do the, the necessary discourse on a planning meeting, and then to do the bylaws that are required in a council meeting following it, um, as part of a Committee of the Whole, you know, to me, is gonna be overwhelming. So I, I would, and I'm not trying to be protectionism, protectionist of my own chair role, and I have no, if they wanna get rid of that, that's totally fine with me, but, um, the other thing about planning is the intricacy and the, and the amount of knowledge required in order to understand the complexities of the content on those meetings, um, and you have to follow them through, because, um, so I, it's great, 'cause I think every council will have an opportunity to watch and follow these developments, um, through a Committee of the Whole or a full council type of, uh, forum, um, but they impact how the statutory and open houses, um, develop, and you do build a bit of a rapport with, not a rapport, but with the planning staff, and an understanding of, um, the, um, of what the proposals are for these developments, so that you're able to chair and manage an open house in a statutory meeting in a, in a, um, an informed way. So it, it, as Councilor Vain mentioned, well, we can maybe rotate the chairs of those statutory and open houses. I think it would just, uh, it's just critical that you continue to remain fully informed of all the developments on those particular developments, and that you can, um, it, it, that's just, it just takes a little bit more of a background information on a consistent basis through the, the life of that, the lifecycle of that, those developments. It's not like a public works or a, uh, NAF where you're making a decision that night, and that's it, and it's over and done with. It's like, these are ongoing, um, uh, official plan and zoning amendments that, um, morph on a regular and constant basis through amendments and other things, that you kinda have to be able to pull all that detail together to be able to, um, to make it, merge it into those statutory open houses and public meetings. So it's just thinking about how you, you see that happening, and, um, I just, this structure is great, but I, I have a feeling that I've seen in the region, which keeps planning separate, and other municipalities, which seem to keep planning still separate, um, and it might be good to get an idea of how many do that, um, uh, before we go with this, but I honestly think you're gonna need your own, it's, its own evening for that. Um, so some of the other questions, sorry, that I quickly brought up were, um, right now, as chairs, we have input into the agendas, um, and that seems to be helpful to ensure enough, you know, we, we capture everything that, in discussion with the directors. I'd like to see that we still have some input into how these agendas are crafted for these, not just myself, but, again, all councils, and how we do that, and, um, how we get agenda items added or discussed prior to an agenda being formulated for Committee of the Whole, um, how we submit information requests, um, to those committees or, or to those directors, um, requesting, and I guess you'll procedurally give us some guidelines how to, um, put a motion forward just for an information request, or whether we can get it at that meeting. If we have questions, and I'm hopeful we can time the Committee of the Whole concerning the, the, how large those agendas will be, that we get them much more in advance than we do now. We cannot honestly absorb everything and prepare questions adequately, and get some background information prior to a meeting, only getting on the Friday and having a meeting on the Monday. So we have to move, push it back. So, we have to move, push it back, and we have to have more time to be able to do that. That's it, it'd be nice to see, helpful to see a sample agenda of what the committee of the whole would look like, which I mentioned as well, so there's just some of the points that I raised. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan, and thank you very much for the report, Sarah. Grinsby's coming of age. This is great. I was at Roma for two days, and I did a lot of networking, talking with other counselors, just, you know, we're just chatting away, hey, committee of the whole, do you guys do this? Oh, yeah, we've been doing it for a long time, yeah. I've, outside the box, I've talked to my friends in Lincoln, and West Lincoln, and we're not reinventing the wheel here, I think we're doing a great thing, I really do. With all due respect to the lay members, they, you know what, that's the toughest part, because I was a lay member before I got elected, and that, so I know what that's all about. But just moving forward, I think that we're on the right track, I'm really, I'm really happy to see this report. Question I do have is the summertime, and I've always, sorry, this is just me, in September? I want to get back to business. And I've said that in the past, too, you know, with Counselor Furtick, when we were on council together, I said, you know what, why are we, so, can we look at if it's the will of council? Is September not, because, do we have a lot of staff on vacation? I'm just curious, because I kind of, I think, does the region go back, and they start their meetings, Mayor, back in September, and, so, that's my only...
We start our, all of ours start at 6:30.
That's just my only, not concern, but just, I'm just throwing that into the mix, that, you know, I'm ready to go back in September, so, I'll leave it, and thank you very much.
Counselor Vardy, then Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Sarah, I know it's a lot of work, but I do have a lot of concerns about it. And, you know, if I think back to my, my background in infectious disease, and working in HIV/AIDS and hepatitis C, we worked very, very closely with community groups, and their, their expert input was absolutely critical in how we shaped our programs, and what we did. And, you know, that's what, and having it at the front end, or, you know, so when we begin these discussions, is really, really important. And I think not having that element, and just having, you know, perhaps delegations come forward at the end, we're missing an opportunity, and I think we're also missing, you know, there's an element of transparency that I think that we're, that we're losing. I mean, I want to hear what the community's got to say. I want them, I want to work with the community, you know, I want to know their opinions and, and get their feedback, as we're starting to talk about an issue. The other issue I have, so, I worry, I don't like the idea of losing our, our, our community members, because I think that, you know, they, they bring a needed expertise, and a needed perspective, and another view, that's grassroots, and I guess that's my background, is, you know, working with the grassroots community, so that, that's one thing. The other thing is, right now, we have four standing committee chairs. Those chairs drive the agenda. They, you know, they, they work with the groups to determine, or, you know, with staff, to determine what needs to come forward. I'm not ready to abdicate that responsibility, and just take, take whatever staff comes and, and kind of deal with whatever somebody else gives me. I mean, I, I want to be able to have a hand in driving that agenda, because I represent the community. Town staff don't represent the community, we represent the community, so, we're their voice, and, and we need to be able to have some impact on the kinds of issues that are brought forward. So, when you get rid of the standing committees, and the role of the chairs in developing those agendas, to my mind, you're, you're abdicating your responsibility as a counselor, and, and you're just leaving it to somebody else to give you what, whatever, you know, whatever they decide you should hear about or work on. So, that is a huge, huge concern for me. The notion of rotating chairs, I, I think is a really bad idea, because, you know, wouldn't, I'm sorry, Counselor Vane, but, you know, when you're talking about giving people experience, having the experience, you know, with someone like a Counselor Bothwell, who, who has such a depth of knowledge of planning, you know, I, no offense, John, I don't want to turn it over to you, not to pick on you, but, but I think that we would lose something by just sort of giving everybody a shot at it. You know, we have, we have people on council with some very, you know, they, they bring forward some very specific skills, some very specific experience. I know Counselor Cadwell used to work in the operation center, and he knows as a, his pastime is a firefighter, he knows a lot about kind of, you know, I don't, I don't know what to call it, but the, the kind of the guts of the town, what's happening with pipes and sewers, and fire hydrants, and water pressure, and all kinds of things, and, you know, do I really want to drive that agenda? I'm not sure, so sure that that's the best use of the expertise that I bring. If I look at Counselor, Counselor Frake, with, with his experience as, as an executive, you know, for an international company, you know, he's exceedingly well-placed to chair finance and administration, and I don't want to lose that, and I'm afraid that if we do this, that's what's going to happen. So, as things sit this way, I, I think, I think we need to work on this a bit more before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, through the mayor. I agree with Counselor Vane and Counselor Bothwell. I think that it's great to have committee of the whole, and I think, as far as planning, it's, I think, the most important to have all eight members of council's opinion in those votes and those decisions. We represent people in our wards, and even with matters with respect to other wards. So, for example, a counselor can attend the planning meeting, and I'm on the planning committee, so I get to vote, but you can come and sit in the audience, and we will ask you, the chair would ask for comment, if, if you have any, but the other counselors don't get a vote, and so, if there is some issue, or just an input to it, we have to lift it at our regular council meeting, when it's approved from that minutes, so, it can add time. It also, if, if I, I'm on planning, so it's not a great example, but if I wasn't on planning, if I wanted my input, I would have to lift each motion, which, and so, I think, where I agree with Counselor Bothwell, is that at the staff public meetings and at the open houses, that it should be the current chair of planning to chair those, there's a bit of experience or expertise, it's, it's difficult to, and, and the level of experience that you do get by not rotating, is that one person gets the experience, but by rotating, it takes away from, from anyone gathering, it's like a full experience of, of doing that, and I think that Counselor Bothwell's been doing a good job, and that, and I think that your recommendation was good. In general, I support this motion, and I would like to call for a recorded vote when we do vote, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Seeing no further questions, thank you, Sarah, for your presentation, excellent job. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Frake, resolved that TC 20-01 dated 21st January 2020 be received, and that the town of Grinsby governance structure changes outlined in this report be approved, and that proposed 2020 meeting calendar for the committee of the whole and council meetings as attached, Appendix 1, targeted to commence March 2020, be approved.
Sorry, just through you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question of clarity. We were given two options, option one or option two for the chair, so is this the recommendation for option one, that you'll chair everything?
Yeah, I believe, I believe this is the one.
Thank you.
We have a recorded vote requested by Counselor Sharp. Counselor Bothwell?
It's a yea, but it's with the conditions that I suggested in my comments. Like, it's, it's a yea to go with it, I just didn't hear whether or not we're actually going to consider some of the recommendations.
Counselor Dunstall?
Oh, sorry, yea, yea, sorry.
Counselor Frake?
Yea.
Counselor Cadwell?
In favor.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
Counselor Bane?
Yea.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay.
And myself, I'm a yea. Moving forward, we have our resolution disclosure of G E I board member compensation requested by Counselor Frake. Counselor Frake?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer that.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor to defer the disclosure of the G I board member compensation? Do we need to vote on deferring? No? Okay. Okay, because the mover and seconder voted to defer, so that motion is deferred. Up next, we have notice of motion. All right, there we go. Town of Grinsby notice of motion, introduction date today, January 21st, 2020, bylaw enforcement support RFP parking enforcement requested by Counselor Vane, resolved that staff proceed with seeking proposals from qualified individuals or firms to provide bylaw enforcement support in regards to parking enforcement. Second notice of motion, donations of funds requested by Counselor Vane, whereas Counselor Vardy returned her portion of the G I board compensation, therefore, be it resolved that part of the funds be donated to Fort and the Grinsby Historical Society. Notice of motion number three, subject status update on outstanding closed session items requested by Counselor Vane, resolved that staff bring back a status update on outstanding closed session items that are currently still under the exceptions of Section 239 of the Up next, we have the CAO memo, budget schedule update. CAO?
Through you, Mayor. As we could see from the memo, we're asking council to consider, we originally were scheduling to get the budget binder out to the public and to all of council around January the 27th, we're asking for an extension to February the 5th. We've made a lot of changes this budget year, we're going to a longer forecast, three-year forecast, we've costed all the strategic priorities in the budget, as well as all the council resolutions, and that's taken us a bit more time, and we want to do it right the first time, so, we're asking for February 5th. And then, maybe to allow for longer public consultation, we originally were scheduling a budget meeting on the February the 10th, and we're asking if you would consider allowing us to discuss that on the 13th of February, if that fits with everybody's schedule.
Counselor Vardy?
Through you. Somebody, Harry? Sorry, sir. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Are you doing zero-based budgeting? So, are we going to no salary, as well as an itemized list of everything that's being put in the budget?
Through you, Chair, yeah, it'd be very detailed, sure, you're going, it's not zero-based budgeting, but everything from base services to all the enhanced services, the hospital levy, everything will be in there, full disclosure, yeah.
So, your base services will be detailed and itemized and costed?
Yes, through you, there'll be full, you know, full base services and the extensive audit.
So, that, that didn't answer my question, will, will the base services be itemized and fully detailed?
Through you, we're going to be looking at the base services under the current services will be detailed, and there'll be costs associated with them.
Counselor Bothwell?
Good, because I'll be looking for that, Harry.
Counselor Bothwell?
In the past, I've always been the proud recipient of about a 500-page GL ledger binder of the budget from, from our director of finance there, so I'm looking forward as well, because I like a fine tooth comb and a 500-page document to go through.
Counselor Vane?
I would just respectfully request that we get one more week. February 13th is, is coming up fast, and as Counselor Bothwell and Counselor Vardy have both stated, that's a big document to go through. I was hoping maybe we could move it to February 20th. Make a motion to amend if we can.
No, I don't believe we can do this at this time.
Sorry, Counselor, we, we looked at all the various dates, and if, if, and that was the key date, there's, because we put this plan out that that February 10th would be the, the budget time, we, with all our staff, everybody was available, and everybody started booking some time off thereafter, so...
That's only going to give us eight days to review this on top of everything else.
We'll be there for you, you know, the treasurer, myself, everybody, any questions, we'll go through every piece of detail with you that you need any help.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and I don't have a problem with this at all. Just my question, I know in the past, I've always looking for actuals, so, will we have the actuals pretty much in our, this budget, too, then? Great, thank you very much.
Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Vardy, resolved that the memorandum from CAO Harry Schlang dated January 21st, 2020, with reference to the budget schedule update for 2020 be received and approved. All in favor? Up next, we have the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes from December 17th, 2019. Counselor Bothwell? Oh, actually, you weren't there, Counselor Sharp was the chair of that meeting.
No, I was at that one.
Oh, you were at that one, all right. Thank you, Counselor Bothwell.
I don't think there's anything exciting in there. If you just, if you had the opportunity to read the minutes, we did have a delegation from the superstore to, and they asked for a deferral, because they're going to be making some further changes or, to their application, so that was carried to be deferred. The Three Sletter Boulevard application for the development on the corner of Livingston and Sletter, I believe it was eight units, it's, it was carried, and the draft zoning bylaw amendment attached to the report was approved. The public meeting minutes from the previous superstore application were attached to that. Our updated status and activity report, there's a bunch of ongoing work at Eight Lake Street, and out in that Lake Street area, there was some concerns about some works that have been undergone on the St. Vladimir's Church, Hunter Road Church property, where it appeared that they had done some expanded... that they had done some, expanded a parking lot into the Green Belt area and the specialty crop area, and it raised a concern with our Director of Planning on that, because there were no permissions in order for the church to do that, and it has been now purchased by a developer. So there was concerns as to what was going on, and I'm still awaiting a response from the Director as to how come that parking lot was allowed and permitted to be put in place. It is a gravel parking lot, but it's extensive, and it does go into the Green Belt specialty crop areas where it's not permitted. There's also, I also inquired with the N P C A, because it is in a hazard overlay area, and it is governed by the N P C A, and I'm waiting for some further clarification from them as to whether any permit was received to do that. Thirty-three Victoria Terrace, again, there's some further appeals on that property, and it is in legal hands in, as we've directed as well. There was a request to change the time of the meetings, and that didn't go through at the time. There was a little bit of mixed discussion on that. This is where the discussion on the secondary plan for the Grimsby High School came up, and the priorities, what our priorities for the budget were going to be. This is where the cultural, we asked, Mr. Basic noted that it didn't need to be started till 2021 based on the discussions with the school board, so that secondary plan is still important for the Grimsby Secondary School area, but we know we can defer it for at least a year. And the committee requested as well that the cultural heritage landscape studies be considered to be put in the budget for both Grimsby Beach and the Main Street East area as priorities. The wording in the minutes here are a little bit unclear, because my discussion was that there were three priorities that had been brought to Heritage. Only one was moved forward by Heritage, which was Grimsby Beach, because planning directed only one, and this intent at planning was not for all three again, but only for the two, Grimsby Beach and Main Street East, to be prioritized in our budget if possible. The funds that were allocated, we were hopeful from, for the Grimsby Secondary School could be allocated to the Main Street East cultural, the study that was, again, suggested tonight by our delegation. I did raise concerns about the reserves from planning, which seemed to have been depleted consistently, as well Heritage, very, very small amounts, it seems, from what I'm, and I'm, again, very new on council, but having followed it for about four years now and just watching the, what's been put forward, we went into this year knowing we'd have to undergo the cannabis study and whatever, and I just feel that maybe we're underfunding some of the studies. So when I asked about the reserves, so at this budget time, we're going to have to look at how we're managing that. So that came up in the discussion as well, planning. So that was it. Any questions willing to entertain it on those minutes?
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Questions? Oh, I see Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, worship through you to Counselor Bothwell. When I read through this, under delegations, this Hugh Handy G S P group, I was under the impression when I read it, that there was a recommendation, and that they didn't want to make changes, but it was planning that wanted to make changes, and they needed more time before they could make a decision. So could I get some clarification? Was it they?
Sure can. I understood it was them, the applicant, that had requested it, because there was, I had some questions about the gross floor area that they were looking at expanding upon, and there was differing amounts in their, their application and in the planning report, and it, one of the background documents that they had supporting their application set up to, I think, 30,000 square meters or something they could expand to, but there's, the zoning amendment, or the documents that they presented, didn't go to that maximum, and then I guess what they ended up thinking was, oh, maybe we need to review that and ensure that we are covering the full amount of lot coverage and development potential that we intended to do, and it may only be in one part of our application, not in another. So they, the applicant, wants to ensure that what they're putting forward is their final proposal, and it's fully comprehensive, and they noted, I guess, I guess they found as well that there may be a bit of an inconsistency in the square footage that they were putting in that application. So it's not planning, it was the applicant who specifically requested that it be deferred.
May I just respond by saying if this happened at a committee of the whole, I wouldn't have asked this question. I would have already known the answer. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes of December 17, 2019 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the Administration and Finance meeting minutes from January 13, 2020. Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on, yep, the 13th. We called a order at 3:30, there was no disclosures of interest. We had a verbal update on a workshop by Sarah for the Integrity Commissioner. That'll, I forget what the date was now.
March 3rd?
March the 3rd, sorry. It's just in here. And we also had an update from Philip Janikis, our I T Director, who updated verbally on a cybersecurity seminar, which will also happen on the same day, March the 3rd, so it's quite comprehensive, and I would encourage everyone here to attend that. We had a number of reports. The first report was an update on our website, and it represented the various statistics from last year, and I don't have them in front of me, but I assume that you have seen them. They're quite interesting. It's over four or five pages long, it's not too bad. So it's certainly have come a long way, and it's capturing a lot of great information on activities in the town and out. Our Finance Director filed a report for an interim tax levy increase, oh, sorry, for interim tax levy, which will give us an interim taxes until we get our new budget in place. And I don't know if Stephen wanted to add a little bit to that, if you don't mind. We do this every year. We take, I think, six months of last year, and we extrapolate that, I think we come up with half a year of interim tax numbers.
Yeah, what we do is we take last year's full levy, which was about $58 million. That didn't, that's not just the town, that's the region, that's school boards. We basically just divide that by two, so we're levying about $29 million. So it's basically half of what you would have paid last year on your tax bill.
Okay. Received a request to extend the promissory note for G P I. That was, that was table, that was passed. There was a report on consolidated fees and charges, about 150 pages long, covered all of the services and facilities in Grimsby. I'm sure you will have a lot of fun going through them, they're very interesting. I think there was 300 bucks for spitting on the street, is that right, Ms. Counselor Sharp? Anyways, then there was a bylaw authorization of 2020 consolidated fees and charges, and that was it. It was a very simple, very short agenda. Take any questions?
Thank you, Counselor Frake. Counselor Dunstall, question?
Sorry.
Thank you. I want the camera on me, you know? If I, you don't turn it on, I don't get the camera. Yeah. Thank you, worship through you to our Chair, but since Stephen was here, I thought I'd just ask the question, and maybe he doesn't have the answer tonight, but when I, when we were looking at the interim taxes and the tax levies and rates, I noticed that the multi-residential, is it a higher rate than commercial? Is that, did I read that correctly? Is it higher than the?
The multi-raise, multi-res, yes, yeah.
Do we know why multi-resident, so if I have an eight or 16-unit apartment building, I pay a higher tax than the commercial? Wow. Do you, based on?
It's built to the landlord, and then the landlord will distribute it amongst the tenants. Yeah.
So we pass it on to the tenant, and here, we hear people coming in and saying, we need affordable housing, and we tax multi-residential more than we do commercial. I just found that kind of odd. Does that make sense? Because the landlord can pass it on to the resident or the tenant. I just thought it was unusual. I didn't catch that before. I've done it many times.
The multi-res rate has come down in the last number of years. There has been a concerted effort because of affordable housing to reduce that rate. There's a lot of competing interests, as you can imagine. The special interest groups really come out when we go to set tax policy during the year, which we'll be doing shortly with the region. Yes, you're absolutely right, affordable housing, it, there has been a concerted effort to get that rate down, and we have. We are at the high end of the threshold that the province has set for that ratio, and so we're having to keep the, we have to keep reducing that ratio down. We're mandated to. So, yes, but the commercial rate is, yes, is lower.
Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, through the Mayor. So I'm on the Admin and Finance, and I was at that meeting, but with regard to the promissory note, we voted, and I voted to extend for one year. But did G E I have any plan if we, or G P I have any plan if we didn't extend it? Was there, so I, we were only really presented with one option, and I, I feel like that I wasn't given, so they had a 20-year agreement with us, that's now come to its end on February 1st, and we extended it, or we recommended that we extend it. What, what did we recommend that we not do? What was the other option?
So there could have been a number of options, and what could have, what could have taken place? The town could have demanded payment on the note. We could have looked, there could have been a restructuring of the note to potentially say, keep a portion of the note, or we could have just left it the way it was. It's producing a fairly good interest rate, and we could continue to receive interest at a fairly, fairly high rate.
Just one follow-up. So by extending it, are we, in essence, just leaving it the way it is?
Yes, all terms and conditions of note will remain the same. The interest rate will remain the same currently. The O E B is, there'll be a rate review next year in 2021, and from what it appears right now, it's probably that rate will come down even more. So it's currently sitting at 4.54, but I would expect that that interest rate will be lowered at the next rate setting.
Counselor Bane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Peter, or Stephen? God, I always want to call you Peter for some reason, I don't know why, buddy. Okay, so it's 4.5%, 4.54% is what they're paying us. How much is the loan?
Approximately 5.7 million.
5.7 million. How much interest are we paying on the Southward Park loan?
We don't have a loan for Southward Park.
Fire station, then?
Fire station, yes. What is the interest rate on that? Oh. I can't tell you right offhand, I'd have to get back to you. Yeah.
Sorry, the 4.54% from the promissory note, we get that money every year, no matter what? Okay. Now, the, so the fire station, how much do we owe on the fire station?
The note was originally for 3.8 million.
Okay. Do we have the money necessary to build the Peach King Center, whether we get the funding from federal and provincial government or not?
No.
Sorry, based on what I've seen in other towns in the region, we're obviously going to have to do, and based on the requirements, sorry? I'm sorry, I don't understand, say it again? No, I'm getting to a point. Sorry, Stephen. So based on what I've seen in other, at the region and other towns, we're obviously going to have a tax increase here of about 5 or 6% it looks like, because the average seems to be. So we're continuing to leave this 5.7 million sitting with the Hydro Company, and we're increasing taxes to the residents, we're not able to pay for certain things, we carry our own loan. This doesn't make sense, and yet you recommended it. Why, I'm just, I'm kind of lost here as to why we're doing this. It's like, we don't have enough food on the table, but we can afford to give food to others. It just doesn't make sense. I think, my personal opinion is, I don't agree with it. I think the Hydro should get their own loan, just my opinion, but I'd like to know why you think it's a good deal, because I saw you supported it, and I'm just, I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just curious. I'd just like to know the reasoning, please.
Well, right now, we're facing an interesting budget year. This is guaranteed revenue to the town of about $262,000 a year, that to forego that interest in this budget year would be difficult. It's, the note extension is only for one year. At the end of the one year, there's a number of larger items that are coming up in the budget in future years, that we have some time then to reconsider how those monies, if council decides to call the note, to how they want to maybe possibly spend those monies.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and through you to Stephen. We had a good conversation at our meeting with regards to the interim tax levy and the tax rates, and I just, I just asked a question, and I want to thank Stephen very much for getting me the answer. It was about the, our, the average residential assessment, and it was, it was very interesting, good, good, good work, good conversation, because I just, I just brought up the, what a friend, how real estate is kind of getting the, and then, but, and I thank Stephen again, because he did get back to me, for 2019, the average residential assessment currency was 419,933, and I really appreciate that information, and thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell?
Just a quick question, and I'm not too sure the relationship between our interim tax rates and the region, but at one point, they were talking about the vacant land rates, and I just wanted to know how that's going, because what we're trying to do is not make it desirable for people to leave their properties vacant, but actually to, and get a break, and actually to do something with it in economic development.
So there's two parts to vacancy. One is there's a vacancy rebate, where if your commercial building is actually vacant, you can apply for a vacancy rebate. You actually get money off of your taxes, you get money back from your taxes. And then there's something called a subclass tax reduction, where if you have vacant land or excess land, the tax rate you pay is at a discount. Those are, will be, start to be phased out, starting, I believe, next year, the vacant land and excess land subclass tax discounts will be, start to be phased out. I think it's over four years, if I'm not mistaken, I'll have to double-check. And the actual vacancy rebates, where you, if your, if your property is vacant, that is being phased out as well, and that has already started. You're welcome.
Counselor Sharp?
I just have one more comment, further to Counselor Vane. With the 4.54% return on our, on our promissory note, and if my memory serves, I think that we're paying 2.97% on the Debenhamsure for the, for the fire station two, and so, I mean, since we have a $5.7 million loan, or promissory note, it stands to reason that we could borrow up to $5.7 million, and we can pay the interest on our loan with the interest from the promissory note, and have a balance of like 1.57%. So it's, so selling it for cash, or settling it for cash versus borrowing to do what we need to do and paying the interest, I think that it's false logic to think that, that we're feeding others, or, I forget the analogy, but I think that keeping the promissory note and extending the interest is what's most, what's the best thing to do for the town.
Seeing no further questions. Thank you, Stephen. Moved by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the Administration and Finance Committee meeting minutes of January 13, 2020 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes of January 14, 2020, and Counselor Sharp? 2020, and Counselor Sharp was the acting chair for that meeting. Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am the vice chair of the Planning and Development Committee, and this committee, I was the chair, and it was a short meeting, thankfully, because it's my first, and we had only a few items. The first was delegation from Save Main Street and the Historical Society, and we had that same delegation tonight, so that was received. We also had a letter from John Arians with regard to his conduct in a previous meeting that was also received, and there was two notice of appeals, one at 33 Victoria Terrace, and one at 226 and 228 Main Street, they were both received, and there was the planning status report, and that was also received. Otherwise, the meeting was done at 6:47 PM, and it was short and sweet, and we were, we were done. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy.
Counselor Bathwell?
Do you want to chair all my meetings? Thank you very much for doing that, though, it was much appreciated in my absence, and I, I hear it went really well, so thank you. I do have one quick question about the, the NOSA appeal for 226 to 228 Main Street East. Did, I don't know if the Director of Planning gave any further information on it. I understand it was filed by a resident, and I thought that that particular development is still pending the final report from Planning, and a recommendation, and a vote by council on approval, because what I understood was that development, which is the Bran Haven development, backing onto the escarpment, correct? Which one, the 226 to 228? Oh, is this the Latchford one? Sorry, the Latch, sorry, oh, okay. Did you, did you declare a conflict on that? And just, I'm just, I know you've had on all the other ones, but this was just a document, so, sorry. So, it's just, it was a resident, though, who was appealing, who was appealing the, the approval of the, of that particular development, is that correct? And she's going to the help out on it?
Yeah, it was a resident, and Mr. Basic wasn't here, so we, and, but with, it is my parents' application, and it was an approved application, and it's been appealed by one of the neighbors. So, we received it, there wasn't much discussion on it. It is in the, the agenda and minutes, if you have any questions, and when Mr. Basic is back, I think he's on vacation, I'm sure he could help.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Moved by Counsel Dunstall, second by Counsel Vardy. Resolved that the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes of January 14th, 2020 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have correspondence. Moved by Counsel Vardy, second by Counsel Dunstall. Resolved that the Grimsby Economic Development Committee meeting minutes of December 18th be received and filed. Actually, Counsel Cadwell, you'd like to speak on that, I'm sure?
I certainly do. Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And, yeah, that's, boy, that's a long time ago, it seems, eh, but it was a very, it was a great meeting. We had a panel discussion that our CIO, Mr. Schlang, set up. We had some professionals, economic professionals. I'm just going to read it out here quickly. I, I thought it was a great report, the minutes that gives you all the questions that we, that we addressed, and both sides to the questions. So, I hope members of council had the opportunity to read through that with great detail, because again, it's a very important topic. But we had Bob Sagan, who was the former Assistant Deputy Minister of International Government Affairs. We also had Kelly Provost, our Regional Economic Development Officer, who attends pretty well all our GDAC meetings, and great to have her input there. And we also had Paul Dianni, who was the Economic Development Officer for the Town of Lincoln. And we were all here at the, in the roundtable, I, I thought the, it was all set up very well. And also in attendance, was great to see Mayor Jordan, Counselor Dunstall was there, and we had a lot of staff there, and also the, the members of the Committee of GDAC. And so, we just went through a question and answer period with the, with everybody, and I was just kind of looking around, and I was speaking with our staff, Nancy Simon, and I said, wow, everybody was really engaged, taking notes, and it was, it was just a great, great, I'll call it an economic summit for Grimsby, really was. So, that was pretty well the basis of our, of our meeting. Then we did address, we had two items under new business. The, a sponsorship to the 20 Valley Winter Wine Fest was brought to our attention. We got a lot of information on it. It was an event that was held, I believe, two weeks ago, in the rain, unfortunately, but they were looking for Grimsby to, to sponsor the event, and the committee really didn't see the, the benefit to the investment of sponsoring down there. We all, we discussed about the event, everybody knows it's a great event, but we just decided not to invest into that, that event. Also, we, we had a resolution brought forward by Member Richard Dundas and Member Susan Manuel, just, just resolved that the Grimsby Economic Development Committee receive council's strategic plan report and deliberate on how to support the initiatives contained therein for the next meeting of the Grimsby Economic Development Committee. So, again, good discussion points. So, it was a great meeting, and looking forward to, moving forward with this, this committee. The information that was discussed was a lot of, I, I kind of look at as, from council's perspective, a good template as to when, when we do look at our budget, and I'm understanding that we're going to be looking at an economic development officer. I please review that again. There's some good points on both sides of it, and, but anyways, I think it's a good, good notation to, for us to, to learn from. So, that's pretty well was the extent of the meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Any questions on the GDAC minutes? No. Seeing none. Moved by, I just wanted to say, actually, the presentation was really good, the strategic economic presentation. It was really well enjoyed, and, and I got a lot out of it. Thank you. Moved by Counsel Vardy, second by Counsel Dunstall. Resolved that the Grimsby Economic Development Committee meeting minutes of December 18th, 2019 be received and filed. All in favor? That's carried. Next correspondence, we have moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolved that the correspondence from Region Niagara with reference to the Roy T. Adams Humanitarian of the Year Award be received. All in favor? That's carried. Counsel Cadwell, you'd like to speak on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. You know what, I'd just like to ask a question. I know it's been ongoing for a lot of years, because we, we get that, the, the opportunity to nominate somebody, but I think if maybe if Sarah could, as our town clerk, and maybe just, this is just my own, I always wondered, who wins that, you know, and if they had a list of maybe, maybe winners, that the past winners, I think that'd be interesting information, because, you know, it's, it's been ongoing. I think back, I know when I lived in St. Catherine's, Mr. Adams was the mayor way back then, but I, I'm just curious, you know, the past winners, I think would be interesting information for, for members of council, too. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, we can get that for you. I certainly, I know last year, I remember that at the region, it was the owner, and I, his name escapes me, of Dan's Produce, he has, it's a woods in Niagara Falls that, that is open for different groups, special needs groups and everything. The, the name of the woods, I don't know if it's Victoria Woods, or, he's certainly been in the Niagara Falls community, and through the whole Niagara region, he's been a well-deserved recipient. So, that's what I have on that. But we'll try to get the list of, of past recipients. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolved that the correspondence from the region in Niagara with reference to Roy T. Adams Humanitarian of the Year Award be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Moved by Counsel Cadwell, second by Counsel Ritchie. Resolved that the correspondence from Niagara Region with reference to the 2020 Budget Waste Management Services Operating Budget and Requisition CD, CSD 70-2019 Revised be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Moved by Counsel Cadwell, second by Counsel Ritchie. Resolved that the correspondence from the Niagara Region with reference to the 2020 Budget Water and Wastewater Operating Budget Rate Setting and Requisition CSD 71-219 be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolved that the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, MPAQ, 2019 Year End Assessment Report be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolved that lead be given to introduce bylaws 20-01 to 20-03, and that be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Next up, we have new business, and I just want to comment on that. We just got back from the Roma Conference. We had, there, we had Counsel Cadwell, Counsel Frank, Counsel Vardy, and our CIO was there. And we did quite well with delegations. We actually had four delegations that we participated in. The first one was with Steve Clark, Minister of Housing, where we talked about affordable housing, and we talked about the Green Belt, and we also talked about preserving the woodlot. And we had a really good discussion with Minister Clark. He actually, such a good discussion, that he requested that he'd like to have a follow-up discussion with MPP Oosterhoff and, and council within the next 30 days. So, MPP Oosterhoff and myself are organizing that. Next up, we met with the Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Economic Development, and that was a fulsome meeting as well. We, they did announce some new initiatives. One is the RED grant, which is a partnership in economic development, which is offering 30% fees paid for by the provincial government. And also, there was another announcement, was it OSIP, or? OSIP, a $200 million fund that is opening up another funding stream, you know, in the OSIP. And we also managed to mention the fact that we do have a grant application in there with the arena and the community center improvement, and we really pushed it to the Parliamentary Assistant that, that our grant was really a good fit for the program, and that we exceeded with nine out of 10 of our recommendations that were in our recreation strategic plan. Up next, we met with Vijay Tenenbaum, I think, or Tenen, I, I'm sorry, I'm bad with that. He's the Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Transport. We thanked them for their work done on the, the Christie Street Interchange, the diamond, and the ongoing work that's going to be done on that. And then, we proceeded to talk about the, the escarpment crossing corridor at Bartlett, and, and just trying to let the Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister know that we're working hard with the rest of West Niagara and the region to get the environmental assessment for that project up and running in 2020. And that rolls into our meeting we had today with Carolyn Mulrooney, the Minister of Transport. It was a large meeting with several attendees there. We had all three West Niagara mayors. We had Chair Bradley was there, MPP Oosterhoff, and a number of counselors. Counsel Vardy was there, and our CAOs and the CAOs from the other West Niagara municipalities, as well as CIO, Acting CIO Ron Tripp. And we really pushed to the Minister that, that the escarpment crossing is a very worthwhile project, that really, there is a need there, and we, they already have seen that, that the region and West Niagara, as well as the, it has worked really well together to, to try to push this effort forward. We really need to take the trucks off both Mountain Street in Grimsby and, and Mountain Street in Beamsville, and, and this is one, the best way to do it, to actually have a, a road that will be good for the next 50 to 75 years. So, I guess some other people that were at the, oh, one other thing, too, is Christine Elliott, in her, in her speech to the delegation, actually did mention West Lincoln Memorial Hospital as one of the two hospitals that were approved for construction in, in the near future. So, it was really nice to hear that actually mentioned at the Roma Conference. So, that's about what I have for that. So, for a change, I went first this time. Counsel Vardy?
I have something under, under new business. Some of you might recall that I had, in Public Works Committee, suggested that we get reflectors for fire hydrants. And I just see that Richard's here, I've been meaning to send him a, an email to thank him. I'm starting to see them all over town. Really, really pleased that I'm getting comments from residents, how much they appreciate them. So, thank you very much. So, well done.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just want to, I attended the, got some information here. We had the flag raising for Crime Stoppers, I believe, was the 6th, the Monday of January. Good turnout with staff and, and members of the council. And I attended the, they had a, on the 9th, I believe it was the 9th, yeah. Sorry, let me just check my notes here. Yeah, they, they had the, the launching of the, at, of Crime Stopper, sorry, for the, at Lookout Point in Pelham. Again, it's, wow, it was great presentations there, and they were, they were launching the elderly abuse prevention programs and those kinds of things. And, and I'll tell you, it's, just to hear the stories, and, and the support that Crime Stoppers gives, I mean, it, it's just great. They, there's so many different, I'm just going to go quickly, then I just won't take any more time, but topics of presentations, elder abuse, human trafficking, illegal dumping, frauds and scams, safe schools, bullying prevention, elementary and middle, secondary schools, and senior to senior bullying. So, it, it's just such a great organization, that if you have any, any issues, and you can call Crime Stoppers. It's, it's, again, nothing, the, no information will be, identity information will be brought forward, but I, I just thought, what a great organization. And so, it was a great event, and again, as town and council are very supportive of it, so it was nice to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Any other new business? Seeing none. Before we move into close session, the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 3rd, 2020, at 7:00 PM, right here. Thank you, and good evening. That's our, oh. Counsel Sharp?
Sorry I'm late for the new business, but one thing that has come up recently is with the upcoming possible closure of the Grimsby Secondary School, they are hosting a reunion in the year 2020. a reunion in the year 2020. It's called the Last Hurrah, although it's been postponed until 2022. But registration is open. It is being held at the high school and the Peach King Center. It is on May 15th, 16th, and 17th. That's the May-long weekend. And so, for those of us in town who went to GSS, there will be a reunion, and it will be on the May 2-4 weekend. You can find information for registration on... They have a website, or you can find it on my social media, or you can contact me directly. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. I will go over this again, and then that concludes our open business for this meeting. The next council meeting, again, is scheduled for Monday, February 3rd, 2020, at 7:00 right here. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolved that council meeting closed session under Section 239-2B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, board appointment review resolutions. All in favor? That's carried.
It's about two different motions, this is the first motion and this is the second one.
Okay.
This is the second motion.
Alright, so it beat that one now?
Yeah, you can beat the first one to the next.
So who's this?
That's the same number, sorry. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Vane. Resolve that council review all boards in December 2020 or within three months after December 2020. Be it further resolved that the councils of the Towne Grinsby thanks the replaced board members for their time and commitment to the community. All in favor? That's carried. Sorry, read the whole thing?
Yes.
Alright. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Vane. Whereas resolution C-18-220 from the special council meeting of December 9, 2018 states that all board appointments were reviewed by council in the first or second quarter of 2019. Whereas council did not review all board appointments to date and whereas council is obligated to review all board appointments as per resolution C-18-220. Resolve that council for the corporation of the Towne Grinsby, having given due consideration to the committees, make the following changes to the following boards or directors effective immediately.
Okay.
So who's, that was the same mover, sorry. Moved by councillor Ritchie, second by councillor Vane. Resolve that council review all boards in December 2020 or within three months after December 2020. Be it further resolved that the council of the town of Grinsby thanks to replace board members for their time and commitment to the community. All in favor? That's carried. So I read the whole thing?
Yes.
All right. Moved by councillor Ritchie, second by councillor Vane. Whereas resolution C eighteen dash two twenty from the special council meeting of December ninth, two thousand and eighteen states that all board appointments were reviewed by council in the first or second quarter of two thousand and nineteen. Whereas council did not review all board appointments to date. And whereas council is obligated to review all board appointments as per resolution C eighteen dash two twenty. Resolve that council for the corporation of the town of Grinsby, having given due consideration to the committees, make the following changes to the following boards or directors effective immediately. For Niagara Power, NPI, Kurt Whitnell, Jeff Jordan, Glenn King. For Grinsby Power Incorporated, Philip Bestling, Chair, Kurt Whitnell, Glenn King, Dave Cadwell, and Dave Sharp. All in favor? For Grinsby Energy Incorporated, G I, Rob Hatton, Delight Davoli, Leanne Vardy, Jim Howden, Jim Bowden, or Bowden, Bowman. It's Bowman. Spelled wrong in here. All? Four nine three eight four two seven Ontario Incorporated, hold call two, Delight Davoli, Leanne Vardy, Jim Howden, Rob Hatton. For Grinsby Hydro Incorporated, G H I, Delight Davoli. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by councillor Sharp, second by councillor Ritchie. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws twenty dash zero one to twenty dash zero three, read a first time, now be read a second and third time and finally passed. And that the mayor and the town clerk do sign and seal the same. Any rule of council to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. Meeting's adjourned.